I will call our meeting, our regular city council meetings, virtually via WebEx of February 9th, 2021 to order. If everyone could please take, put their camera on if you're able to and unmute yourself and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation
stands
under God, with visible liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
It always feels so difficult to assume. All right, thank you, everyone. Well, the next item is the open forum. And I will pass it to Assistant Winn to just let people know how people can, how folks can participate in the open forum and then also let us know if anyone has called in for the forum.
Thank you, Mayor. We highly encourage residents to participate in our open forum live during the meetings. So you can participate live by calling 612-861-0651 during the open forum portion of the city council meetings. If you would like your comments read, you can contact myself ahead of time at 612-861-9711. Or you can email me your comments to be read at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. And I do have a caller waiting, so give me just a moment here.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you. Could you please state your name and your address before you speak?
Sure, my name is Sandy Spanier. My address is 7144 Knox Avenue South here in Richfield. And I prepared a three-minute deal, so I'll just go ahead. A tree preservation policy is the reason I comment this evening. This topic has become important to me when I, along with others, became the voice for the oak tree in the London Byerly's parking lot. As you are aware, that tree and others were cut down to make room for housing and a watershed district project. In 1993, when we purchased our Richfield home, trees were one of our considerations in purchasing our home. We had looked at homes in newer communities, and the one thing those communities did not have were mature trees, rather newly planted trees that needed at least another 10 years to provide shade for a home or canopy for a street. Have you truly appreciated the canopy over Richfield streets in the fall as the trees provide shade and beautiful color? I suspect many assume that will always be part of this community. I want to make sure of it. Tree preservation is not replacement. Tree preservation can help to maintain mature trees and legacy trees, like that old majestic oak in the parking lot of London Byerly's. I've received many comments in regards to a policy. Let me share some of those comments and my thoughts. The first comment was, "You can't dictate what happens on private property." Guess what? It happens all the time. It's called city ordinance. Communities have ordinances that affect private and public property, things from where you can have a fire pit in your yard to how to pile wood on your property, pulling permits to build or renovate, and yes, even how long your grass can be. The second one, "Just plant a new tree." New trees are important, but along with new ones, we should also have policies to maintain mature and legacy trees that already provide benefits and enjoyment to our community. The final one is, "We don't need tree police," and besides, it's progress. A tree preservation policy is not about policing every tree that exists in the community. Rather, having a process in place with specific criteria will ensure our legacy trees are going to be eliminated due to development or redevelopment. It allows the city and the developer to actually consider and implement trees into their plan, not just give false hope or an empty promise. So that I'm, I am hoping that myself, Gordon Hanson, and others in the community are able to help create a policy that the city council will consider. Finally, it's not just a tree. Trees provide beauty, shade, and other benefits to our community. A tree preservation policy will ensure that people living in our community today get to enjoy the benefits of mature and legacy trees today and into the future. Finally, a quote from Bryce Nelson, "People who will not sustain trees will soon live in a world that will not sustain people." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comments, Sandy.
Thank you.
Analyst Winn, do you know if we have any other folks on the line for the open forum?
I do have one more, so I'm going to patch him through.
Hi, this is Gordon Hanson at 6311 Sheridan Avenue South. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council tonight for giving me the opportunity to speak on an issue that I think would benefit the community. I believe it would be beneficial and advisable for city leadership to develop and adopt a tree preservation policy with the goal of enhancing the vitality of our urban forest. Many communities within the Twin Cities metro region, as well as throughout the nation, already have tree preservation policies. I encourage Richfield to join these forward-thinking communities. A tree preservation policy would establish consistent guidelines to promote the sustainability of a healthy urban forest that enhances the community's environmental well-being, character, and livability. A tree preservation policy would complement the existing climate change plan and municipal code in greater detail in preserving mature trees. I believe a tree preservation policy would offer these five benefits. One, serve as a tool that helps foster the understanding that tree preservation is important within this community. Provide guidelines, number two, provide guidelines to promote better understanding of community expectations when developments or land use changes are proposed. Three, keep tree preservation on the minds of policymakers as land use plans move forward through approval processes. Number four, improve communications related to the intended removal or preservation of trees. And five, define which trees should be considered for preservation, possibly with two categories. One, mature trees of significance, and two, legacy trees. The preservation of mature trees offers many benefits to our community as a whole. In an urban environment filled with concrete and hardscape that we live in today, trees offer a cooling effect that benefits us all, especially in this era of climate change and weather that is trending warmer. Trees are also a major contributor in absorbing stormwater runoff, helping to reduce flooding and relieving stress on our stormwater runoff systems. And finally, trees offer an aesthetic beauty that lends character to the community. I'd kind of like to wind up with this, the old Chinese proverb that says, "The best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago, the second-best time is now." Playing off those words of wisdom, I would say the best time to save and preserve a tree that has 40, 70, or sometimes over 100 years of history rooted here in Richfield is also now. Thank you for your time tonight. I hope that we'll continue this conversation about a tree preservation policy. And I would love to work with the city leadership on developing one. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your comments, Gordon.
Thank you.
Analyst Winn, do you know if we have anyone else on the line for the open forum?
I do not have anybody else.
All right, I will just wait for a little bit longer, then I can close the forum. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Analyst Winn, do we have anybody for the forum?
I do not have any more callers.
Thank you. I will close our open forum, seeing as we have nobody else on the line. And the next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of January 23rd, 2021, the city council work session of January 26th, 2021, the city council meeting of January 26th, 2021, and the special city council meeting of January 30th, 2021.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll move to approve the minute.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Wayland, and seconded by Councilmember Supple, analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
We get to the agenda. I just have two very short updates. Just as folks can see, Councilmember Troutman is not here. He did, did let me know that he was not going to be here tonight. And then I know folks might not wait till the end of our meeting, so I do want to make a very short announcement, and I'll do it again at the end of the meeting, but that we do have our commission and board applications open right now. And they'll be open from February 10th to the 24th. And we have the following openings. We have one position on our HRA, two positions on our advisory board of health, one position on our arts commission, one position on our civil service commission, two positions on our friendship city commission, and seven positions on our charter commission. And you can go to our website to learn more about those openings. Again, the openings are, the application will be open from February 10th to 24th. And you can go online and/or contact Assistant Winn for more information. I just wanted to give that upfront, knowing that not everyone stays till the full meeting. So the next item is the approval of the agenda.
Hayford O'Leary, move agenda?
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The agenda has been moved by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item on our agenda is a consent calendar, and I'll pass it to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are voted upon or acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, first reading of transitory ordinance, providing funding for certain capital improvements from the special revenue fund. Item B, consider the approval of adoption of covenants related to the use of city property at Byriah Apartments LLC for the construction of a public pocket park at approximately 63rd Street East and Richfield Parkway. Item C, consider approval of the first reading of the ordinance rezoning property at 6945 Penn Avenue South as neighborhood business. C1, and schedule a second reading for February 23rd, 2021. Consider the adopt, I'm sorry, item D, consider the adoption of a competitive bidding policy. Item E, approve the cancellation of a special assessment for unpaid false user fees from the 2020 unpaid false alarm fees from private property assessment role. Item F, consider the approval of a resolution restricting parking along Municipal State Aid Street 108, 77th Street from Bloomington Avenue South to Old Cedar Avenue South, Richfield City Limits at Trunk Highway 77. Item G, city coalition letter commenting on XL Energy's 2020-2034 Integrated Resources Plan. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of tonight's consent calendar.
Councilmember Supple, I will move the consent calendar.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
The consent calendar has been moved by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any comments or questions on consent calendar items? All right, analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the contract with the Labor and Trades Local 49 for the period January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. City staff has completed labor negotiations with the Labor and Trades Local 49. The provisions of the 2021 labor agreement cover all of the employees in this union, which consists of 32 positions. The one-year contract provides a wage adjustment of 3% in 2021. It also provides an equity adjustment of an additional $1 per hour to the only step in the LT3 pay grade, which is done after a thorough analysis of past instances in which employees are offered temporary assignments in the LT3 pay grade from LT2 pay grade, and is done to align with the previous adjustment made to the LT1 and LT2 pay grade without prior increases to the LT3 pay grade. The agreement also includes the same employer-provided health and dental insurance contribution as given to the city's nonrepresented employee groups and other bargaining units. It also provides nominal increases to the uniform slash boot allowance and to some licensure and certification pay rate. Does staff have anything to add to this item?
Councilmember Wayland and councilmembers, I, the only thing I just, again, wanted to point out, this is, yeah, just a one-year contract for year 2021. And we had good negotiations with this employee group. We appreciate the conversations we had and look forward to executing this contract.
Thank you. I will, I will just comment that I appreciate the fact, as always, but continue, that we continue to treat our nonrepresented employee groups the same as our union employees and keep that together. So appreciate that, that tradition continuing. I will make the motion then that we adopt a resolution approving the provisions of the 2021 labor agreement with the Labor and Trades Local 49 bargaining unit and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Wayland and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Are there any additional questions or comments on this item? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to thank all the parties to the negotiations for all their work on coming to this agreement, because I know it takes a lot of work on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Any other comments? I was just going to say exactly the same thing, Councilmember Supple. Thank you to Assistant City Manager Demetranko for always leading all of our negotiations and everyone involved on both sides as well. We've had a long history of great amicable negotiations, and that's in great part to our staff and the leadership of Assistant City Manager. Any other comments? All right, analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. We will be considering the appointments to city advisory boards and commissions. Terms of several city advisory board and commission members expired on January 31st, 2021. In addition, there are midterm vacancies that will need to be filled. The terms for advisory board and commissions are for three years. I will read off the sheet after I finish the summary. Unless otherwise noted, everybody is appointed for three years. City council directs the city manager's office to conduct an annual recruitment, seeking applicants to fill the vacancies. The recruitment includes a press release and information on the city's website and social media platforms. Applicants were interviewed at a work session held on January 23rd and January 30th, 2021. And we will be making this to help ensure a quorum as soon as possible. And just before I read the list, I want to say I really appreciated the opportunity to talk with so many residents who wanted to do this. I know we all did. And given that we had some technical difficulties, I particularly appreciate the four folks who've made it to our sort of makeup session the whole one week. So clearly, people are committed to being involved in our city. So I will read the list now. Again, three years unless otherwise specified. To the advisory board of health, we have Michael Wallerick, Joel Schleisman, and Cara Scan. To the arts commission, we have Joyce Marie, Karen Wolverton, and Larry Nelson. To the community services commission, we have Heather McDonald, Meredith Bruzek, Jenna Hanson, and Joseph Miller for three-year terms. And for a one-year term, we have Ralston Sacco. To the friendship city commission, we have Marty Kirsch. To the human rights commission, we have Walter Burke, Anne Flake, Tyler Olson, and Tiffany Bigley. To the planning commission, we have Jim Rudolph, Catherine Quam, and Brendan Caneely. And finally, for the transportation commission, we have Wes Dunzer, Jeff Walls, and David Getner. I don't know if staff would have anything to add, or if Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, if you want to do that announcement again now or later.
Absolutely. I'll just wait to see if staff have anything to add, and then I can do the announcements again.
We just wanted to thank all applicants for taking the time out of their day to interview with council. I know that they were very appreciative of everyone doing that. And as Councilmember Hayford O'Leary stated, those are for three-year terms unless stated otherwise. And all applicants will also be receiving a letter either via email or in the mail stating the commission that they were appointed to as well.
Thank you, Assistant Winn. And then I will just review that. Once again, we have a few additional openings. And the applications will be available through February 10th. They'll be opening February 10th and then close on February 24th. And these are the following vacancies that we have. So we have our housing and redevelopment authority. We have our advisory board of health. And the housing and redevelopment authority has one position. The advisory board of health has two openings. The arts commission has one opening. We have one opening on our civil service commission, two openings on our friendship city commission, and then seven openings on our charter commission. And if you want to learn more about any one of those, you can contact any council member or myself. You can call the city as well. And there's information about each of these boards and commissions online.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion that we appoint members that are previously listed to fill the expiring or vacant terms on city advisory boards and commissions.
Councilmember Wayland, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Are there any council member questions or comments? Councilmember Supple?
I have to say that one of the most enjoyable jobs we have as council members is doing the interviews for all the commissions, because you get to hear all the enthusiasm and the passion for the community and get to meet a great group of people. So thank you to everybody who applied.
Councilmember Wayland?
I'll just say that we echo that, and also will say there were a few folks who were interested in commissions that did not have openings. And so if they're, for them or anyone else who is wondering, like, leadership positions, certainly there are more openings as announced, but also would encourage if you, we talked to a few residents who were saying, like, "I'm new here. I don't know where to plug in." I guess whether you're new or not, if you're looking for places to plug in, we'd love to talk with you and can also point you in the direction of some great community groups that are also looking for leaders to be part of the work in our community. So I just want to appreciate all of the folks who are already in those roles and for the folks who are looking for those kinds of opportunities. We'd love to help connect you to where you could be part of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. And I'd just like to add a huge thank you to our staff, our executive staff, that help in preparing our interviews. There's, it's a lengthy process, and thank you to Assistant Winn and analyst Martinez Gavina for all the work that you do. And it includes, you know, putting the applications out and doing the outreach and sorting through the applications, putting the packets together, and preparing the council members, and calling all of the applicants and setting up interviews, so, and following up afterwards. And I know there's many more things that, that the two of you have done that do every single time. So I want to give a huge thanks to our staff as well for helping lead this. And just encourage our community members. This is such a great way to grow your leadership, to grow, to get to know other people in the community and have a direct influence in making change in your own community. And I think as a council, we're really excited to see how we can continue to support our boards and commissions and the members to advance our priority of equity and community engagement in everything we do. And we're thankful to our staff who's already helped us in making a move in that direction. So we have great opportunities, and we're excited to keep moving forward with our boards and commissions. Any other questions or comments? All right, analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland?
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Is the city manager's report with City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a brief update on COVID tonight. Today was the first case, or first day that we haven't seen any new cases in quite a while, so good news to report. The three cities continue to see decreased cases, hospitalizations, and so that is all good news. However, I do want to caution folks to continue to be vigilant, because there are different variants out there. They are, they are more contagious, and we don't know the impact yet. So public health continues to worry about that. Also, we, the three cities and Bloomington Public Health are looking for a site to provide vaccines. So that's coming together, but we don't have details.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. Are there any questions or comments from council members in the city manager report? Councilmember Wayland?
Can I just clarify on that last point? Are, they are looking for a site as in, like, they're already talking to the people that they need to about potential places? Or they are looking for, like, community groups that have large buildings and might be willing to host that kind of thing? I guess, are you soliciting or informing?
Both and. We have two sites that we're looking at right now. And but, and have looked at other sites, and for various reasons, they didn't work. But if you believe that there's a good site that's a potential, please let me know.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, City Manager. The next item is claims and peril. Who did it last time? Do you guys remember?
Councilmember Wayland.
Okay, then how about Councilmember Hayford O'Leary? Do you want to do claims and peril?
I'm going to admit I don't. Is it just moving claims and peril? Okay, I moved claims and payroll.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. Claims and peril has been moved by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and seconded by Councilmember Supple. I will just say, I, you are glad, you are, you should be happy, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, that former council member Garcia is not listening, because she might get mad at you for something you don't know what to do with. And peril. All right, analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have four ayes.
Thank you. Claims and Peril has been moved. Um, now, our last item is hats off to hometown hits, so I will start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I wanna talk about the Congress of New Urbanism Legacy Project is a very prestigious thing, and they have chosen Richfield and Bloomington area to work on their project. And it's gonna be the area around Portland and four ninety-four. And so they're gonna have a bunch of people coming together to come up with ideas of how we can have a forward-looking vision for that area. And they would like the community to give their input. So they're kicking off a round of community input to say, "What's the community's vision? What does the community want?" And it's going to be Wednesday, February twenty-fourth, from six to seven-thirty PM on a Zoom meeting. And you can find out about how to register by going to the city website or to the city's Facebook page. And they will be mailing out information and putting information in the sun current. But it's really exciting to think about that we're just gonna be having this vision for what to do for the future. And we would like to hear from the community about that. Um, the second thing I wanted to mention is that we are coming to the close of the thirty-fourth season of the Adaptive Recreation, um, I'm gonna read my own notes, Learning Exchange Season for, um, uh, ski and snowboard, and we do that out at Highland Hills. And so people are able to learn how to ski and snowboard, and it's their thirty-fourth season, which I think is pretty impressive. And finally, this evening, um, De La Sal and Richfield High School are having quite the basketball game. And it started at seven PM when we called our meeting to order, and they're playing right now, so good luck to the Richfield Spartans. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Supple. Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have one comment, um, which is actually a repeat or ongoing from last time, just to say that we, um, well, slight update, that we now have scheduled the, uh, joint work session between council and the HRA on the inclusionary housing policy. Uh, we've been getting some feedback from folks of ARDAP and the housing team in town, um, but would love more community input as we make decisions around, um, what kind and amount of affordable housing and accessible housing we'd like to see in future new development. Um, so please, would encourage residents to keep reaching out with your input. Um, and yeah, that's all I got tonight.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um, just two things. One, I happened to be watching the Planning Commission recording today, and I just wanted to congratulate the commission and, and its staff, um, on taking effort to really explain the processes that the commission does. I really like that they put this effort, both for people watching, uh, people participating in the meeting, and commissioners themselves, to sort of remind them of the scope of the decision. I was just impressed at the thoughtfulness of trying to make this thing that can be difficult and intimidating to people hopefully a little bit easier. And then, um, on a sort of more general or lighthearted, unrelated to city business note, um, I had, I've had some people over just dropping off things or going for walks with me, and I keep getting compliments on the mailman path that apparently is not common in every city. So I just wanna say, and that's to say the little, little path people tend to shovel from door to door near their houses. Um, it's a really nice thing to do. Um, if you don't do it already, please do it. If you do, keep it up, because it's, that's a miserable job right now. It's extremely cold, so saving them a couple minutes is a nice thing to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Okay, I gotta pull mine up here. One second. Where's I had it up? And now, we can't find it. Okay, well, since I can't find it, I might ask, um, our city manager Rodriguez to help me just jump in with, I was going to do, um, the award that our finance department got, um, for our twenty-nineteen, um, finances. Is that something that you'd be able to, um, give us an update on, City Manager Rodriguez? I just had it, um, up on my computer, and now I just lost it.
Yes, I can do that. I'd be happy to. So our, our finance department was awarded the excellence, uh, for financial reporting, uh, for the annual, with annual report. It's a comprehensive annual financial reporter, CAFR for short. And this is for our twenty-nineteen results. And this is one statistic that I wanted, that I needed to look up too, was that we have gotten this for thirty-six years in a row. So, um, kudos to our finance staff. It's literally the result of thousands of keystrokes and checking and double-checking, and so really proud of our finance team.
Thank you so much for jumping in. I literally just had it up. Um, and then another thing that I do wanna share is, um, you know, we get, as a city, many, all, all cities get quite a few data requests, but we get, um, several data requests, and I know in the past, community members have said it's been hard or confusing. And we do have a new data request system. Um, so you can go to our city website, which is much easier to navigate. We have a great new website. Um, and you can just search data request, and you'll go straight to the page where you can get to our new system. Um, and do, uh, submit a data request much easier, um, than, than folks have been able to before. There's frequently asked questions. You can, um, get the status on your request as well, once it's submitted. And it's a much easier system, so I just wanted to let people know if you wanna know, if you wanna pull any public records or put a data request in for city information, you can do that, and we have a new and easy system to do so. Um, so that is all I have. And seeing as we have no other business, I'll adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.